The Bossier City Council Meeting, welcome everyone to this cold day, to this council meeting. We're glad you're here. We'll have the, uh, the meeting start at 3:00 PM Tuesday, January 24th. We have the call to order and vacation, Councilmember Chris Smith and Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Brian Hammond, please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. Lord, I pray that you be with us in this council meeting today as we conduct the business of Bossier City. Lord, be with each and every one of the council members as we make decisions today. And be with each and every one of us as we drive home. Continue to protect us and continue to pour out your blessings. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You would please face the flag and recite the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Counsel, all present. In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The Chair will entertain a motion in a second to approve minutes of January 10th, 2023, regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
Show move.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel. Any addition to the agenda?
No, sir. Motion carries. Uh, there are no additions or deletions from the agenda today.
Any ceremony we'll need to approve?
Yes, sir.
Look at my, second.
Okay. That motion is second to approve. Anyone like to comment before we vote? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any ceremony matters or recognition of guests?
No, sir.
Next item.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P23-01 Walter O. Bigby Roundabout Monument.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Today, we are opening the bids for Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Roundabout Monument. There were two addendums. Addendum number one changed the bid date. Addendum number two included the sign-in sheet from the mandatory meeting, included clarification on bid documents and answered questions brought up at the mandatory bid meeting. The engineer's estimate is $330,000. The first bid is, my, nope. I apologize. Apologies. Uh, the first bid is from Aquarius Contractors Incorporated. The bid bond is included and the addendums were included. The bid is $294,245,294,245.00. Bid number two is from Darren Bailey Incorporated. The bid bond is included. The addendums are included. The bid is $289,359,289,359.00. Bid number three is Henderson Construction Services Incorporated. The bid bond is included. The addenda are included. The bid is $324,032,400.00. Bid number four is Integrity Incorporated. The bid bond is included. The addenda are included. The bid is $331,300,331,300.00.
Make a motion with a reading. Approve the reading of the bids.
Thank you.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Montgomery, any comments? Yes, ma'am. If you would, give your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Alice Boyer. My address is 5041 Highway 80 in Horton. I'm, I'm coming to speak in opposition to this statue.
On, on this bid that we just did?
Well, actually to the statue itself. Is that possible?
Okay. Of, of the bidding process you're talking about?
No, about the actual statue itself.
What statue is that?
Aren't these bids for the statue?
The stat, the monument.
The monument.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm a little bit confused about why we are even erecting this since over the past few years, we've had numerous statues taken down. Even in the state, there have been statues taken down. In New Orleans, many. So I'm not quite sure why there's a value placed on this. And I'm just wondering what the benefit of it is. I mean, we don't, idolatry should not be included in our city, you know, functions, it seems to me. Because I don't think that, you know, 90% of the people in this community are not going to care about a statue on a road that may even change its name in the near future. We've seen many roads around here change names frequently. You know, and the thing is, the, the thing that people really care about, you know, probably 90% of the community is going to be, you know, their leisure areas and parks. I wish we would maintain, upgrade, improve, make safer from predators and make them exemplary. Make them something that, you know, people can be proud of. That statue is not going to accomplish that. And, you know, if it wasn't important, there wouldn't be a majority of these recreational areas inside all of the subdivisions within the city and surrounding areas. You know, people care about the school districts. They care about the roads and the ease of travel around this city. They care about safe housing. They care about safe entertainment and shopping areas. You know, they, they don't want go from an overreach. And, you know, it's not about the statues. You know, nobody's going to care about that. And there's a couple of other issues I, you know, I probably shouldn't even speak about right now because it's not pertaining to the exact subject. But it's all relevant, you know, because, you know, there are some things that are, there are decisions made by this council that affect very few people in this community. And I'm just kind of asking y'all to refocus on what the community, what's important for the community and the people within it. Because that statue, I may not live within the city limits, but I'm going to be passing it and I'm going to know how much got spent on that and wish that it was spent on something other than. So I'm asking y'all to, you know, refocus. And the only other thing I want to add, the one thing, I'm not, I'm going to eliminate a couple of other items, but I'm also going to say that people do care about the term limit issue. So, but thank y'all very much for letting me speak about it. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Anyone, anyone else?
I'd like to speak. Not, not to you, ma'am. Phyllis, I'd like for the record, if you could, pull the minutes of when we went through the process of naming the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway and there was a lengthy discussion regarding this. My fellow councilmember, Mr. Williams and I had some good discussion about it. But I think it would be advantageous for people to understand the man that we're honoring that came from Bossier City and what he's done for this state. And if I'm not mistaken, from our history and the foundation of this country, we've always honored those people that have stood up for the people and done things. And the, I would hate to see the day that we do not honor those men and women. Right out here, we have a monument. Phyllis, what's the name of it? For the female veteran.
Female Veterans Memorial.
And to me, that, that speaks a lot for the female veterans of not only this community, but the United States of America. And I think that our monuments serve a purpose to remind us of those that have gone before us and what they've done to change our lives and provide for the freedoms that we each enjoy every day. So if you could, please, we'll have that available for anyone that would like to see the decision that was made and why it was made to honor this man from Bossier City.
Yes, sir. I can have those available in, in my office.
Thank you.
And I'll also link it, make that notation on the minutes where it is on the website.
Thank you.
Any other council member like to speak? Okay. I, I didn't, uh, earlier acknowledge students. Are there any students here today? Oh, you are. Okay. Good to have you all. Let me get you to, uh, to come up and give your name quickly. Oh, we need to vote on this first?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and you guys come up. I, I did see you out there. Let's vote on this, um,
Any other public comment?
Do we have a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, no more comments. So please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's, let's hear your names.
Uh, my name is Grayson Smith.
Your school?
Airline.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Albie Bryce and I go to Horton.
Um, my name is Gilbert Lau. I go to, um, Bit Bossier Parish Community College.
Okay. Wonderful. We're so glad to have you. This is your city council. The city attorney is on that end. And these are your council members. The mayor is on that end. And this is your city clerk. We're so glad you're here. I hope that you learned a lot today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Public hearings, actions on unfinished business, adopting ordinance, amending ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6-1, Number 22 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances, to amend the description of the Festival Plaza region to enlarge the area included. Final reading.
Show move.
Second.
Of the motion, Mr. Hammond, second. Uh, Mr. Maggio, comments?
I think this would be good for Bossier and the East Bank District. Um, we got so much offer down there and it's booming. And so in every little, um, business that opens down there, it's, it's good for Bossier City. It brings people in and enough money too. It's, it's a good thing that they've been busy down in traffic jams. And, you know, when they traffic jams like that, it's mon, it's tax dollars for Bossier. And that's a good thing. So I'm glad, I'm, I'm thanking y'all for helping me with this.
And the floor is open for public input or comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached 2023 Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs. First, uh, final reading, sorry.
Show move. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Smith. Discussion, counsel? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance allocating $70,000 for sewer main repairs using the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund to cover all project costs. Final reading.
Show move. Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Hammond. Any discussion, counsel? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2023 general fund budget. Payments to government and other agencies by reducing the amount appropriated to Sportran from $900,000 to a maximum of $500,000 for bus services in Bossier City. Final reading.
Show move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Williams. Um, discussion, counsel?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, I just want to state some things. Uh, I'd like to take a moment to address the budget item since I've been approached and asked for my thoughts. I campaigned on running the city like a business and I'd like to state for the record that while I'm open to renegotiating this contract, I do not agree with the timing of this decision. We are less than one month into our current year's budget. The city council has the authority to reduce the Sportran's budget via ordinance. If the budget amendment is adopted, it will increase the city's general fund balance by $400,000. If this passes, I propose those dollars are used to hire additional Bossier City police officers as safety is one of my top priorities. And I know important safety is, is to, I don't have priority, just, uh, safety is to our citizens. Other agencies could benefit from additional funding such as the Bossier City Council on Aging, which provides vital services to our elderly population in the city. The city council will make the final decision. And again, while I don't agree with the timing, I am focusing, focusing on making sure these funds will be used, benefit all citizens of Bossier City. I wasn't here last meeting because I wasn't feeling well, but I watched the meeting and heard a council member state that there were budget concerns. I immediately went to our finance director and asked if there was something we need to be worried about. The city finances are in good shape. Thank you.
Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, I think I was in a meeting, I think Mr. Smith was in a meeting, Mr. Nottingham was in a meeting with Angela. Uh, and this was several months ago. And we were for, we were for cutting some issues and that was one of them. And you agreed then?
Yes, sir. I said I've been negotiating, but I mean, and it's time, and it's time. And you, y'all, y'all approved the budget for $900,000. Now y'all cutting it in the second week.
Is there any way we can have Mr. Williamson, um, tell us how much we spent on Sportran last year? 2022, when we had a $900,000 budget for it? I think it's around 1.1, something like that, 1.2? If I'm not mistaken?
We ain't got the final bill yet.
Yeah, um, yeah, we haven't gotten our December bill yet, but we're, um,
We're over budget?
Roughly.
And have we gotten a reason why we're over budget from Sportran?
We get a detail attached to every bill showing what makes up the, um, what their billing is for. So we do have support for the bills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, Ms. Washington, we'll let you speak, but not now?
De Niro, that's like, sit down.
So, so any other council member want to comment on this item before we open the floor? Okay. So we, we have, uh, Ms. Brown and Mr. Keith here today with us, counsel. Want to give them a chance to speak on this item before we let Mr. Washington to come forth?
Hi. Good afternoon, um, gentlemen, and thank you for giving us a time to speak publicly today on this issue.
Would you give me your address, Ms. Brown?
Yes. 8601 Millicent Way, Apartment 125, Shreveport, Louisiana, ZIP Code 71115. Okay. May I begin? Okay. Um, I'm here today to address the issues of not specifically the budget cuts themselves, but how they will impact, um, the ridership, particularly the paratransit ridership of Sportran. Um, it's my understanding that one of the reasons you all, uh, felt the need to make a decision regarding the budget is because of the bus routes in Bossier, there are those of you who rode and saw that it was very minimally being used. And I applaud the, uh, effort to make proper stewardship, um, decisions for your taxpayers. That's important, stewardship responsibility for any of us. As personally, but you all have an exceptional responsibility because of your sworn duties. What I don't think you realize in making this decision to cut the budget is how deeply and disproportionately it will affect the paratransit riders. That is those of us who have special needs and we don't take the city bus per se. We have, uh, appointments that we make in advance and they pick us up at our door and bring us back. And right now, I understand that you have issues that would, you would say, take maybe $400,000 from the budget and that should be enough, I'm, I think you're figuring, because of how little the buses are being used. I would ask that you all, um, broaden your aperture and look at this not just through the lens of how many people may be riding the bus routes, the fixed bus routes in Bossier, but that you actually take into account how this will affect the entire system, um, which primarily includes those of us, um, who are paratransit riders. Um, I think if you actually submit a request to Sportran, get a panel data to show how many trips their paratransit vans are making to and from Bossier each day. We have people who, um, have dialysis appointments. They attend Bossier Parish Community College, which I am a proud alumni of. Um, we also have people who work at the base. The base offers a special, um, program for citizens who are not able to hold traditional jobs in the workforce. Uh, we have people who live in Bossier. The way the proposed cuts are being laid out, it means that we would only be able to be in Bossier between 6:00 and 9:00 in the morning as far as travel and then 2:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. This is what Sportran is proposing to do based on your budget cut. So let me share something with you. Uh, we already have a lot of ridership. So let's just say someone has a doctor's appointment in Bossier. They're coming from Shreveport and it's a, it's a, uh, a nine o'clock appointment. If they, if they can get a spot, because now there are going to be fewer vans running and, and not as many opportunities to serve those people, if they can get a spot, it's very possible that they would have to take a six o'clock pickup from their home, be dropped off at the doctor's office around 6:25, 6:30, have to wait an hour and a half outside until the doctor's office opens. And then, once they're seen by a doctor, let's just say they have that 10 o'clock, that nine o'clock appointment and they're done by 10:00. They can't leave because Sportran is not running after, between 9:00 and 2:00. So they're stuck there at that appointment until at least 2:00. And that is if they get a 2:00 appointment to return. They could end up with a 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock pickup to return based on how few vans they'll have available in those different areas. So while I understand that you all are trying to make the best use of the resources that you're managing for the citizens, what I think you may not realize is that a lot of us are traveling back and forth via the paratransit on Sportran each day. And we're contributing to your coffers in that way as well because we spend money at doctors. We spend money, um, at restaurants. We spend money at church, you know, we do whatever we can. And because they're looking to cut out all services in Bossier on the weekend, that means some of your citizens won't be able to attend church. That means that they won't perhaps be able to visit family. I mean, this is really taking a hatchet to the very concept of keeping your most vulnerable citizens lively and able to participate in the community. And I know that's not your intent. So that's not what I'm trying to say. What I am saying is perhaps if you get from the city, sorry, from Sportran, how much of their budget actually focuses on paratransit, then you could make a weighted decision to say, okay, you have paratransit, you have the traditional bus, and now a lot of their, um, focus is on the microtransit industry, which you may see some of the paperwork in front of you. And microtransit in some areas is successful, but in many instances, it's been deemed to be, um, not cost effective. They end up spending more per rider with the microtransit than they do for paratransit and traditional bus services. So it's a hit or miss based on the population and what people's needs are and how they're being met. And I think that's where the issue of the different bus routes being moved and things being placed where you're not familiar with or not aware of. So if you get specifics to show how much of your dollars are being spent on paratransit coming to and from Bossier, I think you would see that it's not just sitting on a bus and maybe one or two people get on. They're back and forth all day. And as a matter of fact, we need more resources because a lot of our paratransit are now being used to facilitate the microtransit where the on-demand. And it's actually transit don't have the on-demand option, even though our paratransit vans are being used to transport people in the microtransit division of on-demand. So it's like we're already at a disadvantage. And now the budget cuts, which you may have actual justification for, I think if you look at what needs to be, if they don't have that information, ask them to determine for you, how much of the budget do they need to run the services to and from Shreveport, Bossier on paratransit? And let that dictate how much you spend. Because I'll be honest with you, I have to agree with the mayor. When they first told me about this last week and they said, uh, well, Bossier's making budget cuts. That's what we've gotten from Sportran is that Bossier's making budget cuts and that's why they're having to cut out all our services. And I said, you've got to be kidding. Bossier handles their money better than Shreveport. I promise to God. That's what I said because I know that to be true. Um, I worked in television for years and I remember when the gaming industry, I shared this with Ms. McGraw, when the gaming industry came into Louisiana and there were, uh, there was legislation so that the different municipalities could get a portion of it. And Bossier City was able to take, if I'm not mistaken, the interest from their gaming revenue to upgrade and build anew of their water treatment system. I don't even know what Shreveport did with the money they got. I mean, I'm just saying. So when they said Bossier's making budget cuts, that's why we can't tra, transport you all anymore? I said, something's wrong. And that's why I came here. I'm soaking wet and I apologize for, you know, a drowned rat appearance, but it, it was just important to share.
We appreciate, appreciative of your being here. And because of the length of our agenda, let me get the other person a chance to speak today. We appreciate your comments.
Yes, and I apologize for being long-winded there.
Uh, Mr. Keith? Mr. Keith, if you, if you'll give your address, sir, and your full name?
Uh, yes, sir. My name is Denny Keith. I live at 1401 Linton Road, Benton, Louisiana.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank all y'all for, uh, taking time to listen to us today. I work for Louisiana Association for the Blind. And if it was not for Lyft Line and Sportran, uh, our employees wouldn't be able to go to work. They are, that's the only way we get to work. It's also part of our training, you know? Uh, when I went through vision rehab, you know, through LAB, that's one of the very first things we learned how to do was get around on our own again. And we got to get on Sportran and go to the store, bring back groceries. And in fact, one of the bus And in fact, one of the bus drivers was so kind, she rode around and described to me every bus stop in Bossier City and what was around it, so I knew where I was. And that's just a very great service to our community. Without this service, I mean, we wouldn't be able to go shop on the weekend, go to church, like the young lady said. And that terrifies me, because when you lose the ability to drive, that was my biggest fear about losing most of my eyesight. And I'm here to tell you, when I heard about our public transportation in Bossier, I was very, very proud. And it just opened my eyes and said, I wish other cities would pick up on this and have this type of transportation. And also voting, you know, the disabled and people on a fixed income, you know. Paratransit, Uber doesn't, doesn't have anything for wheelchairs. It's too expensive, people on a fixed income, you know. We all deserve to get out on the weekend and go get our groceries and what we need and get out and take care of our affairs. And I just have to say, this service has really been a blessing in many, many people's lives. And I just hope everybody reconsider's and just knows that it helps out more people in this city than people could even imagine.
Maybe than the numbers show.
Thank you, Mr. Keith, appreciate that. Counsel, before Mr. Washington come, did anyone want to speak on what Ms. Brown said, or Mr. Keith?
On the, on the, on the timing of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, you and Mr. Williams have been requesting a meeting to discuss this for months before we had it just taken in our hands and called a meeting. So this didn't, we made the attempt to talk about this. I just want to make sure that's on the record as well.
That's true. Yeah, okay, okay, Mr. Washington.
Good afternoon, thank you all for inviting us over. Mr. Chris, let me, Mr. Smith, let me correct that statement. The first meeting we got was on December eighteenth, was the communication.
Mr. Washington, let me get you to speak to the chair.
I'm sorry, the first, the first meeting that we, the first information that we received was on December eighteenth. With that all being said, I was out for about three months. I actually had a knee replacement last month, last year. And in, in that regards, I still communicate with each one of my boards and community while I was out. So there was no communication. When I did reach back out to Ms. Phillips, I sent their information back in the chair, the chair at that time, I think maybe it was Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams actually told us that he would wait till the beginning of this year to have the meeting. So that information, Sportran is already always upfront and ready to go forward.
Let me, let me correct that if you don't mind. He was talking about administration.
Okay, okay, I was going to say, I was going to say for two or three.
You responded every time I called you.
All right, sounds good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were clear there.
Yes.
All right, with that being said, Sportran has provided their service plan for, go forward to this council and to the administration for February fifth. Us too, it was very shocking when we called into a meeting on January fourth. We really thought we were coming in to talk about the South Bossier route and the, the changes that we had made down there, which has each month grow ridership. So one of the things that we thought we were moving in a positive direction, we were going to do more in Bossier. Toward the end of that meeting, we were notified as an agency that we would get our budget slashed by four hundred thousand. And like I, like I would tell Councilman Williams, we are respectful of your budget process. We look forward to working with you all, doing whatever you may ask of us to do. But with that being said, there are certain things, you know, especially what the mayor is saying today, there is not a budget crisis here in Bossier. This is kind of heart-burning to us, because we have many riders that take our service each and every day. Last year was the first year in ten years that we've seen the ridership growth that we saw. Our ridership's up a hundred and thirty-two percent. And so whoever is talking about ridership is down, go check the facts, check the numbers. The numbers don't, don't lie. Ridership's a hundred, up a hundred and thirty-two percent system-wide, and that's back from October numbers. We've just got our final numbers in from December today, and we're calculating those and it's possibly higher than a hundred and thirty-two percent for last year's ridership. With that being said, Sportran plan will cut for this, this five hundred thousand dollars, would cut midday service as well as nights and weekends. Why is that such a drastic cut? Because right now, the city of Shreveport and the Sportran bills Bossier about eighty thousand to eighty-five thousand a month for, on a normal basis, for transit services. With that being said, we've already operated January, so you've already ate through eighty thousand dollars of your budget. So you're asking us to take four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and twenty thousand to operate the next eleven months, which is eleven hundred forty thousand dollars a month. That means that you're going to see half the service that you normally see on the road. With that, we were asked to put the most valuable service on the road. The most valuable service is what we call peak time service. Early in the morning, late in the evening, getting people to work, to school, getting people home. There's a huge midday. One of the major things that people don't see a lot of times that we do is dialysis trips. We do a lot of ADA, paratransit, LAB trips. Those services are growing. We take almost fifty, sixty clients to LAB each day. Nobody comes to ask us for that information, that data to show, hey, what is happening with Sportran when we hauling all these people? When I first took over Sportran, our ADA section took about twelve thousand trips a year. Last year, we were close to ninety thousand. So we're doing the things that we have to do as an agency to grow that service. One of the things that I appreciate this, this young lady over here said to us today is that we looked at microtransit. As I first told you when we first came before you, microtransit is not the, is not the opportunity that you put everywhere. That's the reason when we were asked about South Bossier, I said, we don't start in South Bossier with a microtransit service, because that could cause you more. What we do is first, we put a fixed route service out before you. We see if the numbers are proven true. If the numbers prove true, we won't move to, we'll move to a microtransit service, because it's not affordable. One of the reasons we introduced microtransit services is in the areas where there are low-performing areas, such as Viking Drive, where we used to get down to where the old unemployment office was at. We used to run a bus down that road every day, ten times a day. We took that bus out and put microtransit there and put your dollars where it was, where it needs to be, based on the passionate accounts we see being performed. I'm just very confused at this point in time, because as a system, we have done everything you have asked us to do. We brought the South Bossier in. South Bossier, it didn't have the ridership as the rest of the routes. You want to know, it's two reasons it didn't have the routes, the ridership of the rest of the routes. It only ran half of what the rest of the routes ran. We did a trial program. What you're proposing to do right now with all the routes is what we did in the South Bossier as a trial period. So of course, the numbers were lower than the rest of the routes. So, but with that being said, ultimately, we provided everything you asked us to provide. We even provided better ridership last year than we provided in ten years to you. So I was very confused in that meeting. I'm very confused about budget. I'm not sure why we're here, if there's not a budget crisis, a budget situation in Bossier, as was stated to us in the meeting. I clearly asked in that meeting, two or three times, with my staff being present, is there anything that Sportran has done to the city of Bossier, the reason this is happening? And we were told, no, several times. We were told it was only due to budget. We'll be happy to sit down and have those communications with you and have those meetings with you to make any adjustments you want to make. But to take that out on the citizens, I found to be totally unacceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Counsel, we, we going to take the information that we heard today from Ms. Brown, Mr. Keith, and we going to look at options. And Mr. Washington is fully aware that we as a council gave him information on that meeting we held, and we were upfront with you, Mr. Washington, about our concerns. And today, you are telling us what we already know, we appreciate that. But you also don't, we asked you not to do as well, in public as you did with your public announcement recently. But that being the case, we're not going to hold it against you. We just appreciate you being here, and we're going to move on past this item. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. You have to come up here, ma'am.
I will leave a petition that was dropped off at my office for the service. I'm not sure what I did that I wasn't supposed to do. You asked me to present the service to you.
No, no one asked you to come and speak today unless the mayor asks. So you, you're here at the wishes of someone, I don't know if it's the mayor, because we, we really didn't schedule you to speak, but I'm glad you're here. Yes, ma'am.
My name is April Smith, I'm, my address is nine zero seven Evangelion Place in Shreveport. I have a petition also that was signed by the riders that trans, you know, or use the transit system between Shreveport and Bossier. And, and of course, you know, they, a lot of them, they, they work, you know, in the, in the afternoon, you go to work at three, they get off at eleven and nine. They're going to have no way of getting to work and getting home. And, you know, they have no, no other means, you know, as far as their finances, to be able to pay for a taxi or an Uber or a Lyft. And I mean, this is, this is, if you go down to the, to the bus terminal at this time, I mean, all these people are worried about what they're going to do to get back and forth to work to support their families, you know. And so I just wanted to present the petition that's.
Give it to the clerk on that end.
And, and, you know, that is drastically affecting your citizens. And if the budget is supposed to be, you know, supporting the citizens and, and, you know, with their well-being, that's not, this is not giving them transportation to get to work is the worst thing that needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
How y'all doing? My name's Lakeisha Bennett, I live at eleven seventeen, I mean, no, not eleven seventeen, I'm sorry. Seventeen thirty-five, I recently moved, seventeen thirty-five Old Benton Road in Shreveport, Bossier. Seven one one, seven eleven eleven. Okay, I'm here today to speak up for the citizens of Bossier and Shreveport. And the fact is, is that a lot of people ride the bus. And a lot of people in the system are handicapped, are needing a transit. Uber and Lyft, they, they provide driving assistance, but they don't provide for the handicap, like for the wheelchairs. And they don't assistently have the things, you know, the equipment to, to use for the people to get on, you know, on their ride to where they have to go. And I feel that a lot of people need, they need to understand that these things that we have that are available to us is Sportran. Sportran provides for everyone. And so I feel like if they're helping these different people, I think that as long as they're doing their part, they're doing their job. And as citizens, we need them to help us get where we need to go through this life, you know. Every time we put something in place, we shouldn't take it back. We should bring it forth and make sure that the people and the citizens are satisfied that they have somewhere to go every single day. People do have doctor's appointments and people do have dialysis and people have to go grocery shopping, people have to work every day. I mean, including me, I work every day and I use Sportran every day. And I know the fact that a lot of people don't have the means to pay for taxi cab drivers and Ubers and Lifts and don't have credit cards, you know. I think that as long as we keep transit open for the community and broaden our view of how, you know, people ride the bus and how they use the system as to where, how they can get, like, from Viking Drive or from, to Shreveport to, we don't even have buses really, like, going to, like, further out places where people need the bus, you know, like the country, you know what I'm saying? People need more extended transportation, you know. I feel like in the timing that they have on the system right now, it needs to be broadened a little bit more timely-wise, you know, it needs to run a little bit better on time efficiency. And so I believe that as long as we have Sportran, the community, the community can be satisfied that they have buses to where they need to go in Bossier and in Shreveport.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, any other comments?
Oh, yes, sir. My name's Kevin Blanc, I'm at four four five Plaza Circle, Bossier City, seven eleven eleven. As, as they're talking about their feelings and, and what have you, but I, I wonder, is there a city-state agreement with Sportran, or city-Sportran agreement that we're obligated to spend a certain amount of money? Nine hundred thousand dollars being the budget, or four hundred thousand? And, and in that same agreement, is the, is Sportran responsible for giving you, giving us as a city a certain amount of services? They're, they're pulling at our, your heartstrings about making it handicapped accessible and what have you, but is, is that what your agreement with Sportran spells out? That they can cut out this, the, what, or, or you as a council or as administration, can they, can y'all decide, cherry pick which, which part? I agree with what you're saying. If your budget was nine hundred thousand dollars and, and they bill you one point three million dollars, somebody needs to answer for that and, and it needs to be rectified. Now, whether or not you've spent the money, as he's saying, and you'll, and the money's spent and you can't get it back, I don't know about that. But that's my question, is, is it modifiable? Is there, is there, are there, is there a true contract written up every year that's reevaluated and, and signed by the mayor or signed by anybody?
No, sir, we, we have a contract, it goes back to Mayor George DeMint days, if I'm not mistaken. It was never, and we just found this out just, I don't know, six, eight months, a year ago. And it, the, the city has the right to change or cancel any routes in that thing. It was a one-page thing, it was, was not a contract back then.
So, so the handicap thing is not, that's, that's an additional, the, the, what he's talking about, the on-demand, that's all optional things that they're, that they bill y'all in addition to the nine hundred thousand dollars?
Well, that's, that's included.
Yeah, that's included, but. That, that's the question, is my, as, as a, as a Bossier citizen, I don't, I agree that we should have public service, we should have pedestrian, we should be pedestrian-friendly, we should be bicycle-friendly, we should be all the different modes of transportation. And, and, and they should be held to a budget just like everybody else is. And that's, and I agree, I applaud you for trying to hold them to their budget, but I don't know that you, you're cut, you cut their legs out from under anything. I understand where y'all coming from, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Joel, from Shreveport.
What's your full name, sir, address?
You need the full name, Joel Rea, R-E-A, two eleven Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I've been riding Sportran since nineteen eighty-one. When I moved back to Shreveport as an adult, and I used to ride the trolley before that as a kid, back in the sixties. But, so I just, I just wanted to say that it's been a very important service for me since it's not safe for me to drive for certain reasons. But I would just, most of the people here have already said most of what I wanted to say, but on my Facebook, I put, I took the schedules and color-coded them so people could easily see which runs are being eliminated. And it occurred to me, what's being eliminated is going to affect a lot of y'all's businesses, a lot of Bossier businesses. Like, I wanted to go try some of these great Mexican restaurants, the, when they did the Taco Wars thing last year. I tried some good stuff there, and I wanted to try them at the actual restaurants. But, but this new service cuts, that's going to eliminate lunchtime, dinnertime, and weekends. The only ones that are available for breakfast would be the only ones I can get to if I work, you know, for people that work a nine-to-five job. And of course, there's, as other people have said, there's doctor's appointments and, not to mention, the Intermodal Terminal is also the Greyhound and Amtrak Terminal. So people in Bossier who want to go to Greyhound and visit family, who would have taken a Sportran bus to get there, now have to either drive, you know, get there some other way, if they want to go on a weekend, or whatever. But that's pretty much my piece.
Thank you, sir. Just speaking on behalf of the, where is this? Yes, sir, yes, sir. Oh, student, yeah.
I just want to say, I'm a, I'm a registered voter.
Give us your name again.
Yeah, my name is Gilbert Lau.
Address, please.
Yeah, my address is Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero one. I want to speak about the Sportran issue. You know, I'm a registered voter in the state of Louisiana and I, you know, I go to, I go to, I go to Bossier Parish Community College. And I also work on the weekends. And I am a, you know, I study really, really hard. I go to school like Monday for Friday. And I stay like, some, mostly I stay, go early in the morning and I stay late at night, you know, until it closes at the library. And I'm really, I'm a hard worker, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm like a success. I, I'm, 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 you know, I'm like a success, you know, you know, uh, you know, success maniac. I, you know, I like to achieve success. And if you cut the Sportran, it makes it difficult for me to go to school and, you know, achieve my full potential. Not only that, um, it also, I work in the weekends. If you cut that, I won't be able to go to work. And, you know, I don't even have a car and I'm working like very diligently to have the capability to get a car. But if I did have a car, I would still be fighting for, right here for the people who are not fortunate to get a car, you know? And if you cut Sportran, right, it would be, it would be very difficult for people to get to work and go to school. And also, my suggestion is if you need money, um, there's other ways to get money. You can like maybe get it from, maybe, you know, you can, you can cut mon, you can cut and still not cut services. Plus, you know, um, you could have more. Maybe, maybe there's a way you can ask the state or you can ask the federal government to subsidize. And also, what I'm suggesting is that maybe you could extend it because, you know, I work, you know, on holidays like on Thanksgiving and, and Christmas and we need Sportran, um, for those days because I had a difficulty getting to work and I have to ask a coworker to drive me to work on, on Christmas Day. And, and I just want to add that if you make, if you, if you cut Sportran, it will make it impossible, okay? And I just want to end it there and thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so just on behalf of the council, we appreciate everybody's input. We take very seriously what we do and we are sensitive, concerned about the quality of service. Those things that impact your lives, we, we are aware that things that we do up here does impact you. And we will do what we can to make sure that the impact is minimal. And when it comes to money, it can just go so far sometimes. Uh, but I do recognize the need for services and we are going to continue to try to come up with the best plan for those who can get, get the service who need it the most. Uh, so we will try to do that. Uh, any other council member would like to speak?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, I, I know we have a motion and a second on this, but I, I think it would be very advantageous on our parts as a council to maybe continue this item for a month and let us have some more meetings with us, the administration, and Mr. Washington. Just a, a little bit more has come to light today and I think, uh, I would hope that I'm not the only one on this council that is, that is kind of thinking that. So that, that is my recommendation to this council.
We have to, uh?
If, if the, if Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Williams are willing to pull their motion to move this forward today, I'll second Mr. Hammons.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, that's, we just need a date.
Continue, what date?
Continue to.
Let's see here.
Next, the next date?
We have a meeting on the seventh, February seventh, and another one on February twenty-first. Then the next meeting would be March the seventh.
I think February twenty-first would give us enough time to, um, to have some meetings. No more than, no more than four of us present? Three. Three of us. No, no more than three of us, I'm sorry. So that's a motion by Mr. Hammons. Is the second Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Montgomery withdraws his motion.
And you rescind your motion?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay.
So we're going to continue this item until?
February?
February twenty-first. And then that's going to be, it was Mr.'s, Mr. Hammons and Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you comment on that item?
So, um, we're going to continue this item. That's what is proposed. Any comments from the public on, on the, uh, the four vote?
I just wanted to add something that just, uh, Montgomery came up and brought, uh, this. This could potentially impact your business because with no Sportran service, there will come a lot of.
This could actually have unforeseen consequences for a lot of businesses where the paratransit in particular is, uh, is transporting people because with it being unavailable to us between nine and two, people are going to be stuck in places like a doctor's office. And if a doctor is closed between twelve and two, they can't in good conscience leave their patients sitting outside. And then, you know, if they can't leave before the doctor's office closes at noon, where are they going to put them? So we can't just start asking businesses to, to not take lunch for their employees or not, you know, not have their normal operations because of this. And understand that we do recognize that you all aren't specifically cutting paratransit. We realize that it is Sportran's decision on how they want to handle what you're giving them, but we're just explaining to you that, that there's more need for this money than maybe you recognize based on what you've seen so far. So I appreciate you all giving it more consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before it's, council, it's a, uh, motion to continue this item to the February twenty-first meeting. We have a motion and a second. And catch your vote, please.
Pop-up, council?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries.
New business?
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Amy Grant, Realta Real Estate Services. Location of certain tract of land being two point six six acres, more or less located in section twenty-seven. Township nineteen north, range thirteen west, Bossier City, Louisiana. Located near the northwest intersection of Airline Drive and Old Minton Road. Request zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from R L D residential low density to B one business office.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments? Anybody would like to speak on this item? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Warren Moore, total properties. Location of certain tract of land being three point nine acres, more or less located at fifty-four oh nine Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, for an equipment rental business, corner of East Texas and Whitehurst. Request zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from R A residential agriculture to B three general business.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Free, seconded by Mrs. Smith, the discussion council. And the floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance, authorize the mayor, Thomas H. Chandler, to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Bossier City Arts Council, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, seconded, Mr. Maggio, discussion council. The floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three general fund budget to provide funding to the Bossier Arts Council for management of the East Bank District and Plaza, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Wait, you're second. Mr. Montgomery?
I got Mr. Smith and Mr. Williams.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Maggio. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, is this still going to be paid to them on a quarterly basis?
Yes, sir. Once they submit their, uh, report to the administration point of contact, then they will get a check cut. Thank you. And I see Ms. Pope is here. Did she want to speak or, yeah, okay, okay. At least we got it worked out at this point. All right, anybody would like to comment? Please catch your vote, council.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve change order number one for the citywide street improvement phase two project with an increase of three hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars for a total contract price of one million forty thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, first reading.
So move.
Motion, Mr. Williams, seconded, Mrs. Free. Uh, any comments or discussion?
Yeah, is, is this, is this for something, for an unforeseen project that, or just covering our basis on this?
No, so if you'll recall, we bid these out of order, but there was quite a bit of money left on the table on that particular project. So we're change ordering more work to do more, uh, work. So that's, that's what that is. So it's just using the budget, adding to that contractor's contract.
I'm all for getting more for less.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone would like to comment? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve report of change order nine for the L T R I Louisiana Technology Research Institute, Bossier, with an increase in project cost of forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Williams, seconded, Mr. Maggio. Any comments? I believe that's Mr. Maggio, was it not?
It was.
All right, got it right. Okay, um, and the floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote.
Mr. Hammons and?
Uh, I, I keep pushing it, it just keeps, um, saying processing.
My, all this rain we're having might have some internal issues.
Y'all may have turned mine off.
Motion carries.
Did it go, did it go through?
Yes, sir. Introducing ordinance allocating six hundred thousand dollars to come from the twenty twenty-three emergency medical services capital projects budget to replace the current station alerting system, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Free, seconded, Mr. Maggio. Any discussion, council? And the floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend the Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund twenty twenty-two a budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, seconded, Mr. Williams, discussion?
I wanted to ask Ms. Williams if she could come up and just give the council a brief summary of this.
Yes, this adjustment is due to our, um, investment, our unrealized losses on investments for twenty twenty-two. They're as a result of our, um, market adjustment.
But it's unrealized.
This is unrelated to any gaming revenue.
But it's an unrealized loss.
Unrealized loss, yes, sir.
People to understand that.
Think there's a lot of unrealized losses out there in the world right now, unfortunately.
So, Mr. Montgomery, unrealized meaning?
Not recognized. In other words, we, until you actually consummate a financial transaction, it's an unrealized loss. And due to governmental accounting standards, they're now requiring you to make that adjustment on your balance sheet.
Sometimes called a loss on paper. You may have heard it called that before.
Yeah, and they're just, you know, for people that want to see that, they, you know, it gives them more acuity as to your investment portfolio and as to what Mr. Hammond said, you know, everybody's experiencing that. But, you know, it, it, it's not realized and recognized, you know, it's there and it's for informational purposes only.
Okay, that's, that's good information.
Thank you.
For myself and all those others who need to know what that means. All right, okay, um, do we have a motion?
I'm Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Williams.
Okay, good. And the floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote, council.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax audit clerk due to resignation in the tax department, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, seconded, Mr. Montgomery, discussion? Anyone would like to comment? Please catch your vote, council.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of a police jailer one to police jailer two, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, and seconded, Mr. Free, discussion, council? Comment? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one accounts clerk three due to termination in the tax department, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
We've got to get it in down here.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded, Mr. Hammons. I almost have to read his lips over there to know that's Mr. Mr. Smith down there. Okay, any, any comments?
Clear my throat. Yeah.
And the floor is open for, uh, comments from public. Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Approved parade permit fee waivers for the following, the Great Gator five K and Fun Run, April first, twenty twenty-three, and Sun City Elementary Mardi Gras Parade, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hammons, seconded, Mr. Maggio, discussion, council? And the floor is open for comments on this last item. Going once.
Motion carries. Mostly finance report, Angela Williamson, Finance Director.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, it's, it's not on there. I mean, on paper.
Can you, can you blow it up?
What's wrong, gentlemen?
Nothing.
No, we're looking for paper, but it's, it's not on paper. It's, it's for us right here.
All right, use your fingers and blow it up. No, do use your finger.
Give him a finger?
Get y'all that book at Barnes and Noble.
I can't read.
I, I use the arrow key right there.
Where's your mouse? Right here. You can click on that and get that away.
Okay. Right, um, I'm, I'm good. Carry on, see it now. Okay.
Jeff's our IT guy.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
On the big screen as well.
Yeah, increase my, yeah, go ahead.
These are preliminary results since our fiscal year has not been closed yet. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city is currently twenty-seven percent over budget. Hotel motel taxes fund revenue is down because one of the November twenty twenty-one hotel occupancy tax payments was received in December prior year. Parkway capital fund revenue is up due to contribution from the state for the Highway seventy-one lighting phase two project in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Riverboat capital fund revenue is down because gaming revenues are down fourteen percent compared to December twenty twenty-one. EMS billings for December twenty-two increased approximately sixty thousand compared to December twenty twenty-one. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently four percent under budget. Alternative fuel station fund expenses are down due to decreased fuel purchases compared to December twenty twenty-one. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up six point two percent compared to December twenty twenty-one. Page four is the meaning report. There are two less than. There are two less employees than last month. Total employees as of month end is 653, which is 51 below the budgeted positions of 704. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for December 2022 has increased 71% compared to December 2021. Current year-to-date income has increased 92% over prior year and is 3% over budget. Are there any questions?
Chief, how many, how many, you got any guys in the academy now?
Oh, yes, sir. We just started, uh, five yesterday.
I see 15 down, that's, that's a lot.
That, uh, that number has changed since, I think we were currently down eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Monthly projects report, engineering department.
Bean, can I ask you a question while you, before you start this?
Sure.
When does a new fire station getting ready to go open up?
We're waiting on some, uh-
Waiting on some what?
So there's, there's some communication equipment, I think, that's left as far as the construction. It's complete, contractor's been, it's certificate of occupancy's been issued, it's ready to occupy and go, but there's some things that the fire department needs to have installed in there before they can get moving. So, um, soon, I need the clicker.
Oh, is it up there? Did somebody steal the clicker?
I took it home to change the red lights when I go by, that's why.
Can you advance the slide?
Absolutely, somebody stole our clicker.
You should, that should be secondhand nature.
If you stole it, bring it back.
Okay, just a quick update, um, general overview of everything we have going on in the engineering department. Uh, still maintaining an ongoing, uh, capital improvement program of over 100 million with projects in design and construction. Currently 93 million of that is under construction. Uh, nine projects in the design are bid phase, 11 projects under construction, and we have five subdivisions in or nearing, um, the construction phase. So the Carriage Way, um, they've been moving briskly out there, actually gained a few more days this past, uh, month. Uh, they're 58 days ahead of schedule, uh, so about 61% complete with 50% of the time And this is just a cool picture, we've been getting aerial pictography occasionally as this project progresses and you can see that's the current condition. Uh, you can see all the major plate girders there to build the bridge are on site and delivered, um, so it's coming along. LTRI, uh, getting there, you're showing, uh, on this list, we're showing it to be about 60 days behind schedule. Uh, understand that there are some weather delays and other things that have not been baked into that or, or formalized, so it's, you know, formally less days behind than that, but, um, uh, continuing to make progress out there. Uh, the Highway 71 lighting improvements, um, they're ahead, yep, those of y'all that drive that area probably, you know, wondering when the lights are gonna be installed. Um, currently, we're awaiting the delivery of the poles, we expect, uh, those to be shipped in March. So like everything, we're waiting for, you know, delivery of materials. So, uh, Will Height's done a great job out there, but we still have a ways to go in getting that equipment mounted. Swan Lake traffic signal, um, it's up and installed, it's been there a little over 24 hours. Um, that's created a change for people who travel that road. Uh, some of y'all I know have been getting calls. We've gotten several colorful phone calls over the last, uh, day or so related to that signal. Um, there are a couple of things we're doing currently, we're, we're out there monitoring that intersection, we'll be doing that all week. Uh, this morning, there were some other disruptions on Airline Drive that we think may have exacerbated the problem there on Swan Lake, specifically a big accident at Wimple and Airline, we think pushed some Lakewood traffic over to Swan Lake. Um, but another component of this is we're running it at fixed time and I won't get into all the nitty gritty there, but we're telling that signal when to turn red and when to turn green. It is a sophisticated signal, it has detection equipment, but that's not scheduled to be manufactured until May. So we pulled together what equipment we had, we had the mast arms and lights and some other things, got that signal up and running, but it's still gonna be, you know, potentially the middle of the year before we've got all the bits and pieces. I don't know that that being an intelligent signal is gonna change some of that congestion, particularly in the morning with southbound traffic because it's only one lane southbound, but we are monitoring it closely and, and working to do what we can to help folks get used to having that signal there. Uh, Bossier's Art Council Improvement Project's coming along well, uh, they're about 38 days ahead. If you haven't been out there to check that out, building's looking a lot better. Uh, just private development, uh, you can read there for yourself, those are the five ongoing private projects that we have, uh, within the engineering department that we're monitoring. And just a, a quick list of the projects we have in design are out for bid, the lateral B1 drainage improvements, that's over there between Highway 80 and Airline. Uh, we expect to have preliminary plans in hand by next week. Uh, Barto Lane and Montgomery Lane drainage improvements, we have, uh, the preliminary plans in hand from Rayleigh and Associates and are working with them, there's a lot of property challenges associated with executing that project. Uh, the-
Sorry.
We can be done if you want. 2022, uh, citywide street improvements, uh, phase one and phase two are under construction. Uh, we're actively working through that daily. Uh, Parkway Drive, Elm Grove ditch improvements, plans are complete, uh, we have property in hand, we're working on a railroad permit there to get that, uh, out to bid. Uh, Golden Meadows Turn Lane, uh, we're still coordinating with DOTD for the, the study phase of that project. Barstow Boulevard Lighting Project, that's the project to add additional lighting there between Full of Love and Airline. Uh, we're waiting on feedback from the power company, but I believe they have everything in hand to complete that, we're just waiting for them to physically install it. So the city's paid for that, we're now in their schedule to get that done. So took a little time, but, but, uh, I think that's gonna be a big improvement there. Uh, then the Tinsley Parking Lot, big parking lot addition, phase one and phase two, uh, Rayleigh and Associates is working on that and the survey is, uh, ongoing, was expected to start that this week, the weather's probably gonna complicate that some. And that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, could we get, uh, I see Rodney out there, could we get an update on the vehicles and label on them, how, if we got them all labeled?
Mr. Mayor's right next door.
There's a Rodney there.
Yes, sir, I'd like Rodney to come up, we, uh, and Rodney can tell you about it.
We have two left, I just got the last two stickers in today, so we're gonna get the last two done tomorrow when everything's done.
Good work, Rodney. Good work, finally.
And what we're gonna do also, in addition, all the ones that have private plates, when the tags expire, I will buy them a, it's no need in spending the money right now, wait till a tag expires and then we'll get a public plate put on.
And Rodney asked me that the other day, it's just, it costs, we're gonna save some money doing it like that.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And, Mr. Mayor, if you would, uh, entertain a possibility, I, I don't think it's my imagination, I know you're concerned about, uh, the city policing and making sure we have enough coverage. Would, would you get the chief to give us an update on the progression of making sure that we are covered?
Yes, I know we have the same amount of people working that we did from 1997, so I think the city's gotten a lot bigger, a lot more people, so I do think we need to have some more.
Yeah, I just, I, I just want to know what plan it is to make sure we get those slots filled?
Okay.
And also if there's any other options we have to make sure when we need to respond, we, we got the personnel to respond.
Yes, sir.
And so if, if the chief would give us an update on our next meeting on the, uh, 7th, just come before the council and give us a little brief on that, that would be helpful to me and, uh, maybe council would entertain that as well. Okay, any other?